You are watching Access La Porte County, Channel 97. Coming up next, the September 9th, 2024 meeting of the La Porte County Council Budget Continuation Hearings. You can get more information for this meeting by going to www dot access la port county dot org.
You ready? Ready, darling? Good evening. We're gonna call the September 9th, 2024 continuation of the La Porte County Council Budget Hearings.
Thought we were doing the workshop first on, or is this part of it? Is it part of it? I'm sorry to stop you if it's a...
On what?
The workshop on the insurance.
It's part of the budget hearings, yeah. We just lumped it all together, so.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for that. So, at this time, we're gonna, we're gonna update, Carl, are you on? Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Very well, thank you.
Carl's gonna have an update on the insurance.
Sure. I work around here that estimated health insurance expense that's gonna be budgeted this year, we're gonna come down to 9.5 million that you need to budget out of your various funds of the county. But we're gonna start with the, I'm just gonna run through the line items. I realize maybe in the reports that I've sent out to you, the, the one page that I did update, the very last page of that report, I had done an update, and I think Randy had given to you and some of the other members, but I'm not sure it was in the final or in the preliminary draft. But it starts out with estimated claims and health expense for 2025 at 12,028,000. And this is a recommendation of what's an actuarial calculation done by GIS on what they believe the UMR health costs will be for 2000. And they have actually given a range. This is probably more on the low end of the range, and it could go as high as, I think, maybe up to 14 million. But I think Craig Minnie was recommending 12,028,000. We also have Anthem premiums of 340,000, Lake Shore Clinic approximately 372,000, Clinic Solutions 125,000, EMC National Life 235,000, Northwest Health, La Porte 52,000, East Isles 85,000, Fidelity 45,000, Miscellaneous at 10,000, for a subtotal of 13,292,000. From that number, we're gonna subtract out four items of reimbursements for miscellaneous revenues. The first is estimated prescription rebates is roughly about a million dollars a year. Estimated stop-loss reimbursements about 1.5 million. Estimated employee retirees withholding of 100,000, and estimated employee withholdings at the 15% level of 1,200,000. And that brings us down to 9,492,000. For simplicity, I'm rounding up to 9.5 million. And I think on the one page, Randy, that I had provided you, and if, and if you don't have it, I'll be happy to, following this meeting, email it to each of you on the county council.
I don't believe I have it. I just double-checked, Carl, so if you could, please.
I'll send it out. I did basically, it's about a 10% increase in the budget from what the various funds that you budgeted this year. Obviously, you can, you know, review your budget line items and see where you think you have the room. But right now, I believe the different funds have a total budget for 24 of 8,636,560 dollars. So, there'll be an increase of 863,656, for a total of 9,500,216. The biggest chunk is gonna come out of the general fund, and that's 685,000. But obviously, you can shuffle that to the various funds if you need to. And I'm happy that if you're finding that some of the funds are having a difficult time covering this gap, we can maybe look at other alternatives, where to pull the funds from. But I think this is, I would not budget any less than this. You know, it's very possible, and a lot of this is all dependent on what are your claims gonna be? And this is kinda coming from general insurance as to what historically to expect of claims, and they always give a range. The 12,028,000 is kind of on, kind of maybe the average or the low end of what they expect. But if we need to, you know, if we start having higher claims this next year, we may have to come back and do an additional appropriation. But I think for part of purposes of your budgeting, you need, at least need 9,500,000.
Thank you, Carl.
Yep, and one other follow-up. I did have an email conversation, correspondence with Craig. Both Craig and I are out of the office today, and he still stands by the 12,028,000. He did say that we may get a little bit of cost savings yet from Lake Shore Clinic of about 120-some thousand dollars for next year. There'll be some cost savings there, but at this point, I've not factored that in. I think it's always good to have a little bit of a cushion in our budget, especially when things are a little bit uncertain. So, that's my, our recommendation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Carl?
We have a discussion point, so. The 372,000 is supposed to be, you know, cost to North Shore Clinic. The future of North Shore Clinic is kind of a concern right now, being the fact that they're not adequately staffed. They're six to eight weeks out from being, having the nurse practitioner at either the Michigan City or La Porte locations. Is it being utilized properly to where we're getting the proper savings?
I guess the biggest question is, is, it was told to us, I specifically asked, we were into that COVID money, which I'll call the monopoly money theory. They said this was all paid for. I was told to the commissioner, I went to met, I met with the commissioner, I met Mr. Haney. He said, "It was paid for." Well, 372,000 dollars is not paid for. So, that's the problem, is how does commissioners able to make decisions like this? Just like, and I'll give you an example. The council voted to, to give a holiday away with 12th, and they were supposed to trade off a day for that. And as you know, Michigan City does not get off for, for voting, but that was a day that was suggested. The commissioners didn't do anything more than just give, they decided, well, we got, we gave them a holiday, even though we, even though the council voted for it, we gave them a holiday without no concessions to it. This is, this goes on and on and on, that we gotta, we gotta be able to control this somehow. And we can't control it by the free spending of commissioners.
You, you done with your?
I'm done with mine.
So, I had a conversation with Craig Minnie on Friday, and the issue was exactly the fact that Adam brought up, and Adam and I talked after that today, and Mark and I talked, is the fact that they, they don't have a nurse practitioner there. So, if an employee wants, if, if anybody right now was sick and needed to go out there to get a prescription, see a nurse practitioner, there's nobody there in Michigan City or La Porte. So, they have somebody that they're hiring, and it's gonna be six to eight weeks before they have credentials to be able to see patients. So, that's where it's at. So, right now, unless you have already seen the nurse practitioner prior and needed a refill on a prescription that they've already approved, there's, there's, there's no service there for anyone to get, except for the mental health, I think, is, is staffed, is what.
That's who we saw in writing.
Right. You need to talk up here. They can't hear you.
In the Michigan City North Shore, they're supposed to have like family practitioners on Wednesdays and Fridays. And I actually have seen one twice on a Wednesday, just for some checkup stuff. You know, two different Wednesdays, but I know that somebody went on Friday and there was nobody available. So, that's, and then I think pediatricians on the other days in Michigan City. But I know that there were at least two Wednesdays, there was a practitioner in Michigan City.
Right. So, except for the convenience of leaving work or not coming in, go there, or getting paid to do it, which I don't understand the county's theory on that one, because we get plenty of sick days. Nobody takes them. They saw it back at the end of the day. We take the average employer of La Porte County, most of them sell their vacations, their holiday, I'm sorry, their sick days back. So, with that in reference to, is that we have a good insurance program. What's wrong with our insurance? Why do we actually need a backup insurance program for our county employees? Except for the fact that someone will take off the day just to go to the doctor? I don't think we, I don't remember ever prior to this that we had employees that were complaining about the actual insurance that way.
And, and to kind of piggyback off of what you're saying in a different direction, I don't, I'm not against the clinic if it, if it's, employees are utilizing it. And, and it's saving the county, I mean, it's showing that it's saving the county money, or we were able to see what the actual cost of the clinic was. And, and as you stated, when the commissioners approved this, three years ago, was it three? I think it was.
I think it was that candidate.
Three years ago, we asked questions about it then, and we were told, the council, "We don't need your approval, because there's no cost effect, there's no cost factor to this at all." Well, the reality is, there's, there's obviously a big cost factor, because I'm hearing that it, it's costing the county, they believe, but there's other costs besides just that one. But it could be as high as 50,000 dollars a month to cover all the costs and everything that's there.
I should say, when it first opened, it wasn't 50,000 dollars a month. And I brought the paperwork in, we had a budget hearings. But again, the story was, is that with the monopoly money type thing, it's not, we don't have to worry about it, because our refund, our returns are gonna come back and it's gonna pay for itself. That's why they claim that they could do it.
But, but it's, and then it's kind of coincidental, and I don't think it's the whole factor, but now, a Bank Six account that had been operating fine all this time, now all of a sudden, we're having to start dumping a lot of money in there, because the reserve in those refunds aren't coming back, they're getting, we're now funding the clinic out of those funds, and so there's not as much. I'm not saying it's the, we wouldn't have to add any money to it, but obviously, it's, it's a factor that we, you know, should have all been thought out at the time to, you know, when, when they imposed the clinic, there should have been some discussion about that and looked at Bank Six and the whole program to say, okay, we're gonna utilize these funds, this is where it's at. This is where we, we're gonna be in the projection, had Carl run some numbers on it, to say, hey, guess what? In January of 2024, you're gonna hit bottom, something, but Mike.
So, sorry, my dear, you're up.
Go ahead, please.
So, I guess my question is, do we understand what the alternative cost is here with the clinic? My impression, and please someone correct me if I'm wrong, was that the reason for the clinic was that by funneling employees to the clinic, where we've negotiated a rate with North Shore, we have a cheaper portal cost for them to visit the clinic than if they were to go to somewhere like Minute Clinic or some sort of other alternative, you know, primary care physician that has a much higher rate than what we've negotiated with North Shore? Looks like a guy has a comment on that.
When, when you're done, Mr. Keel.
So, so my impression is that our saving is, is because we've negotiated a, a rate with them, and there's no cost to the employee, because we negotiated that savings. So, but we're still paying it either way. If they're getting saved, they're gonna go to a doctor.
You seem to be paying it twice, because you're not getting the usage. It looks like you only had 1,700 encounters for the whole year last year, versus in the tens of thousands of encounters with regular providers. So, I would, so based on the, the usage, I just don't see it happening now. If you were to be able to get 20 or 30% of the employees to use it, I think that you're correct. So, I think it's.
Do we know what that equilibrium point is, where there's that equilibrium?
I, I don't. That would be something that the actuaries would have to take a look at. Because they're still charging, even though they might not charge, they might recharge a reduced rate for the encounter. They're still charging for the labs. If you look at the line items for the labs and for the others. Do you all have access to the document that was sent out last week? You want me to pull it down and push, pull it?
That'd be great.
And share it? Okay, just give me one second.
I'm downloading them right now. Do I have access, darling?
While you're looking for that, I guess as a related matter, do we, have we calculated out the, the prescription savings? Because my impression also is that there's some sort of low-income federal designation that the pharmacy that North Shore has, that benefits our prescriptions, they're cheaper for us as the insurance.
I'll answer that. So, they're a fellow, they're a federal-qualified healthcare clinic, so that is correct. But you need people to actually go ahead and do it. And so, you don't have the carrot or the stick to push them there. And what I understand from Randy and some of the other folks who have used it is, even if your doctor goes ahead and prescribes the prescription, and you have a prescription, you can't, can you all see this?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah, you can't fill it. So, do you still see the?
Can you turn that this way, darling, a little bit, please? Is it, can you guys still see it? Can you fill it?
It's green.
Fill full screen. Can you make it bigger, guy?
I've made it as big as I can on my end. I don't.
My darling.
Can you, is that better?
There you go, much better.
Yeah, so let me, yeah, so. So, for instance, it looks like there was only 1,795 actual services that were performed. And so, you only had 1,500 family practice services versus, you know, you had 78,000 services on the UMR side. And so, even like podiatry, there was only two podiatry visits for the whole year. And so, people are just not utilizing the, you know, so if you were to, I would, off the cuff, Justin, I would think that if you were to get, if you would have been, been able to shift maybe 20 to 25% of these 78,000 encounters over to the blue, that you would be able to, you know what I mean, that it would become cost-effective. But it's just not happening. So, I think part of the problem is, it's a hurdle. So, if you go to your, if you go to your family doctor, or you go to a specialist, and they write you a prescription, you can't just go and get it filled at North Shore. You actually have to have an encounter with the family, with the nurse practitioner in order to, you know, have them ratify that prescription.
And I actually went through that, that exact situation, so I tried that, and, and you're right. Is, is that a federal requirement, or is that a North Shore requirement? Because that seems to be a pretty big barrier to the, to the.
Well, I'm thinking that it's, I'm thinking that it's a federal requirement, that you have to have the encounter, that they have to actually be the actual prescriber for it. Because, because of the whole federal scheme with the federal qualified health clinics. So, I think that's the, that's the rub. I think it's a really good idea, but if people aren't using it, it becomes a loss leader, just because the administrative fees are, you know, are relatively stable. So, if you, the more you can use, the more you're gonna be able to capture that administrative fee, so.
I guess I'm a dollars and cents guy, so I would want to see that it makes financial sense, or at least it's pretty close. But I would also question whether or not the marketing is sufficiently for it. I mean, I remember a year and a half ago, when I first became a councilman, the, the extent of the information I got from North Shore was one or two pages of info, actually came from HR, about North Shore. And it didn't really tell me a whole lot. I've only figured it out through trial and error and asking other people. So, we may not be getting the optimal usage, just because of how we're communicating that information, and maybe more needs to be done in that regard.
I'd like to chime in now, if I may.
Yeah.
I, I put my hand up for the simple reason that it'd be great to use it if there's people there to service us. Running out to Chesterton is not gonna work. We are paying a monthly fee for every employee who has insurance, and we're paying them that fee. And even though, even if some of it may be waived, we're wasting that money if we're not getting enough people there. You can market anything you want, but if people who know about this aren't using it, I mean, I've tried it personally. Not all my family members who are on the plan have tried it. There is definitely the issue on the prescriptions. You just can't walk in there, so therefore with, unless you see an R8. But if there's nobody in the building, you can't see anybody. I mean, I live less than a mile from that, from the facility, and if, if, if there's somebody there and I can get in, it's great. But right now, there's no one. And to me, that's a problem. That's a breach of contract on the other side. And I reviewed what I was able to get for a contract. It wasn't the final signed contract. It's my understanding that it takes 180 days to cancel this. And I'm really serious that why are we paying for this when we don't even have anyone to service our people? It's not about me. It's about servicing everybody, and, and, you know, we have two main offices, one in Michigan City, and we have, and we're the county seat in La Porte, and, and we can't even supply that. And so, if we can't supply that, or they can't supply that for us, I don't think we should be paying for it. And I think that we may, we should be considered, or suggest to the commissioners to consider, to drop this.
Mark, I'm just a, I actually had a question, but I always say, so you just say, what we suggest, has suggested, if we, if this money's not gonna work out, that we just withdraw, that, you know, we just don't pay for this funding, and let them figure out where it's gonna come from, because it's not free money. But anyways, on those reports that was up there, how many were Michigan City, how many were in La Porte? That's, that would be interesting, because I'm just wondering, like, is it?
I didn't, I would have to ask Craig to, to generate that. I, I didn't see that on the report, because you know.
Wasn't the Michigan City clinic pretty new? Didn't it just recently open?
Just recently. And, and just to, just to reiterate, the thing that's kind of brought this to light is the fact that, right now, there's no nurse practitioner in Michigan City or La Porte. And per Craig Minnie, it's gonna be six to eight weeks before they have somebody that has the credentials to see patients. So, right now, we're in limbo, unless you have already been there, seen the previous practitioner, and have a prescription, just need a refill, or the mental health part, I believe is still, he said was still active.
But the mental health services are so low, when you look at the number. So, Randy, this is the second document that I received. Can you all see it?
Can you blow that up again, like you did last?
I'll do my best. Better?
There you go.
So, the problem, this can be a cost savings if we, if, if we were to able to optimize North Shore. But the problem is, here you see 2,700 prescriptions versus 15, or almost 3,000 versus 15,000 prescriptions. That's the problem.
And that, and that's just with Magellan. That's not Walgreens and everywhere else, right? I mean, that's just the Magellan pharmacies.
So, I, I don't know if that's the case, Randy, because what I think is that, well, it could be. But then that would be another, then that would be, should be another line item that we have on the UMR.
I used Magellan, my prescription that North Shore cannot fill, and I went there, seen the nurse practitioner, about getting it explained to her, and I'm not, like, I'll reiterate, I am not against the clinic if it works and people are using it, and there's, and it's providing a good service for them, a lot of their employees and everything else. But I went there with the idea that, and I take a high-end prescription, monthly, and I finished my meeting with the nurse practitioner, left, two weeks later, I called and go, hey, I'm checking on my prescription. They go, "We can't fill that. You gotta go through Magellan for that, because we, we can't fill that here. It's a specialty thing." And that's the, the only reason that I went there, was to try and help utilize the program and to use it. So, but Magellan is a mail-order prescription service. You're saying no?
I'm not saying anything. What I'm saying is, I would, I would, I would think that if UMR is actually paying.
Or maybe it all does.
If we're paying, if we're paying prescriptions, that that would have been on the UMR claim list, and I don't see it. That's all I'm saying.
Maybe I misspoke, because my prescription that comes through the mail, my specialty prescription, is Magellan. That's the only time I.
I think, but I think also, if you go to Walgreens, that it's just like if you had Blue Cross, that Magellan actually.
I get it.
Magellan out here is listed as the, as the pharmaceutical benefits manager, so they're.
Yeah, that's my, that's my understanding.
I stand corrected.
Am I reading this right, that's saying that the 340B plan through North Shore is saving us 327,000 dollars a year, though?
At, at the number that we're using, but that's not even offsetting the, the additional expenses.
Wasn't, I think Carl said earlier that the total that we spent of clinic was 372,000 a year for.
I have some bad, you have some, you, you sounded like Darth Vader. Can you report that? Repeat that?
If I'm. The 300, or is it Carl said earlier that the clinic was 372,000 per year? Is that correct?
That, that's right. That's about what it was in 2023, so.
Well, that's the, hold on, that's the administrative cost.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, but what about the, what about the, the line item that we just went over a second ago?
Put it back up there.
Well, those were costs that if, if North Shore didn't exist as a service to county employees, those costs would just shift over into the other column.
And then, right, incurred by Magellan.
Well, we're, that's prescription. So, the services were, an additional, looks like additional North Shore claims were 90, well, almost 100,000 dollars, so.
Those are, those are claims for service. So, someone feels sick, they go to the doctor, they get seen by a doctor and prescribe something. That cost, they were gonna go to the doctor, whether we had North Shore or whether we didn't. So, if they just went to their local CVS pharmacy, they still would have had that visit. With a small section of people who are taking advantage of it being free, they're probably still paying for it.
Right, but, so, I, I get, I get what you're saying. So, right, the 68,000 would have been on the other side.
Correct. This is a sum cost. So, so we take this out of the equation, and we're only looking at our savings from prescriptions, which is about 370-some thousand dollars. And then we're looking at our costs that we pay as part of the contract, contract with North Shore, which is about 370,000. So, it kind of looks like it's a wash.
I, you know, you have a, you have, I, I think it might be too late, but you have an answer to this problem. The answer is, this is a self-insured plan. You have to rewrite your contracts with UMR and Magellan. And at that point in time, you have to say, if, if the prescriptions are available through North Shore and you don't use it, your co-insurance is 50% of the prescription cost, or 70% of the prescription cost. So, that's the only way to, you know, you have to make it painful for people. Either if you use this, that's gonna save the county money, then you're gonna, you know what I mean, you're only gonna pay the low co-insurance. But if you go ahead and you wanna get the prescription filled for convenience out at Franciscan or at Walgreens or CVS, and it's on our formulary, then you have to pay a higher co-insurance. You know what I mean? But that's, but, but that's too late to get that done this year.
Right.
And I hate to monopolize the conversation here, so I'll turn it back over, but I just want to point out, this is a pretty big benefit to county employees. And before we just ax it, I mean, our job is to balance the cost element of things, but we're also looking at the health and benefits that we offer to our county employees. We want them to have good insurance. That's in our interest. That's how we attract talented people to come to the county and how we reward our employees. If we eliminate that cost or that, that benefit, that's not helping our employees.
Absolutely.
We can be really sure that it's worth eliminating it, not just if the end, the savings ends up being a small amount, like a couple thousand dollars.
We gotta have employees using it, though, so.
True, but we also need to communicate it to them better, I think.
But that, okay.
We have approximately 800 employees, correct?
700, full-time with insurance?
All right, let's say 800, and we, we're just slightly over 1,700 visits. That's two visits for an employee for the year. As opposed to 78,000 visits on the other side. That's, that's exactly what he's trying to say. If we don't get a higher percentage of the people. If we don't get a higher percentage of people actually using it, it's never going to be a break either.
Mark. Mentioned guy mentioned a interesting fact because I know the mills tried it too, it was a kind of a. Same program that they they offered for clinics and stuff for that. But then they tried, they couldn't get us, they tried to force it, then that was a total disaster because everybody's coming in, you know, going, I got special needs or I got special medication or so on and so forth. I think you said the same thing, darling, that the issue comes on is that that that's where when you start to. It's 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 meant to be a total volunteer type thing, it's not meant to be a forced issue. If you do, people are going to be more more upset about it than they will. If that's truly, again, I'll go back to, I didn't, please go back to when we have to, we did, we really had bad insurance in the first place. County did not have bad insurance now, if you're looking, for example, psychiatric psychiatric services, could we have add ons? You can always add on your insurance more than going to a whole new program. So I just think that if we we look at our own program and see what's the needs and wants of the county. So that's what, so example, what happened was they came back to us and said, okay, what does all the employees need? And they just basically put add ons to to you could you could buy it almost like a package deal. Where if I needed that, I could get as that as an add on, I pay X for it, twenty dollars more a month to get this or whatever it has to be. But I think the worst thing you do is, again, this type of program is to tell me you have to use it. And I understand, Guy, you were just mentioning what the facts are.
And yeah, I'm not, I'm not one way or another, I'm just giving you all options.
No, I know, I just went.
And as I stated before, I'm not saying I'm against the clinic. We just need to, if if us as a council are going to fund it, we need to know the true cost and what it is. And and if and if it's beneficial, because because it's, you got to understand when when if you've got. And Monique, are you on it? How many? Employee, she's doing, I thought she was going to join.
I'm here, I'm here.
What is, how many employees do we have on the insurance?
We have a little bit over five hundred and sixty employees that has that's takes the health insurance.
So the the thing that we have to understand that. If five hundred and sixty have the full time insurance. And a hundred of those go use this benefit and that benefit costs this much money and nobody else utilize. There it's it's coming off of their, there's only so much money to go around. I mean, so you know, we're funding this, it's it's less we can do in other places. And we always try to give the best bang for the buck for the most employees and what's out there. I I'm not absolutely not opposed to the clinic, but one, it needs to, it needs to be utilized. And it needs to, we need to know the true cost so that we know what we're funding. It needs and that's that's the thing that brought this whole thing to more light. Is the fact that it they they are having trouble staffing it. And this came from, I mean, like I said, it's beginning with general insurance, they're very frustrated with the whole thing.
So one of the things you you mentioned about Randy, which which this goes right back to day one. Then the day one should have came for us, council members, we have an idea, here's our program.
Right.
But we never were included on that, we were just told it was a no cost issue that we, that's why they were able to do it without going through the council. I've seen many other programs, whether they're good, bad, or different, I'm talking about drug court and all those other things, it'll never cost you nothing. That's why we're able to get it passed and then all of a sudden they come back, we need money for them. I'm not disagreeing with any one of those programs, but the problem is is that we are the fiscal responsible people in this county. But yet they don't use it, we're not being utilized to what we're supposed to and vote and vote for the things that we think we should vote for. Again, they're they're trying to add another one now for another one of these courts. Where's that going to come from? You know, is it that same thing? They got they got initial grant and now it's going to go away at some point? So we, again, we take the vacation, we need to get things under control. And especially, we mentioned the fact of we gave a fantastic raise a couple of years ago. We had the opportunity, brought it up to get the insurance back in line. We have, and by we've been trying for twenty years, so it's never twenty five, twenty five cents to a dollar would be paid for by the by the employees. Now we're down to less than thirteen cents now. For a dollar, that they have actually employees are paying, that number's gone down, down, down.
How was it thirteen? I thought it was fifteen.
It was thirteen.
Fifteen.
It was thirteen a year.
But we corrected.
Okay, fifteen, so two cents more, I'm sorry. I'll stand corrected in two cents, but but but. But again, we never got to the original amount, what it was all set to be twenty five cents.
Any other questions or?
Yes, Mr. Rosen.
So I I too don't want to just throw it away because I've used it and it was successful the times, the few times that I used it. But it's not going to be the answer for every medical need. And if it's not staffed, this is my biggest issue on it, it's not whether we market anything or not, if there's nobody there, we can market. It all we want right now, but there's nobody there for six to eight weeks, so in La Porte. So that part is a big problem for me. The other thing is while they're collecting fees from us and administrative fees on a monthly basis from us. And they can't provide the services, I have a problem, they're not living up to their part of the contract. This is a contract that basically the little bit that I saw was that it automatically renews every year, every year in January unless we stop it. And if we're not getting provide the services, I think we need to go back and negotiate something. And this is an opportunity to try and write something here, to fix something that's a problem and get a better commitment from them. And I'm not trying to put anything on the attorneys, you know, the attorney to to have to solve the problem, but you know, fiscally. You shouldn't be paying for something that you don't get a service for and it should and it's ridiculous to have a hundred and eighty day clause. That in order to get out of this type of contract, a hundred and eighty days. So because we have been without somebody in La Porte for a bit more than just all of a sudden today. And then we have to wait eight weeks, it's been going on for a little while. And so nobody seemed to notice it, nobody seemed to 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 go crazy about it until we started looking at numbers.
And they were, well, we weren't given those numbers. And it was a program that wasn't sold to us.
Up front.
Up front, but we were trying to get.
So the the thing is, is I believe is this guy stated, the this would have to be something we look at for. Next year, when the renewal comes up, because I believe the commissioners have already approved the renewal for twenty twenty five.
That's U M R that's separate.
U M R, it's this hundred and eighty days if you have to.
I I'm talking about the insurance, he was, we were talking about.
Oh, the.
Negotiating with with U M R and everything and Magellan and the different things if it's not available. That's that's what I'm, I'm not talking just North Shore. I mean, it's a package, so.
Could we get North Shore to come to our next meeting or something to give a presentation, maybe we can ask them some questions?
Can you do that, Monique?
Yes, I can do that.
It is, is it correct that they, I believe Craig stated they have a new director or?
Yes, they do.
So I don't want to, you know, bad mouth. F H Qs. But. Their their business model is Medicaid and they receive increased reimbursements, they get a hundred and fifty percent of the regular Medicaid rate that. People get. And so I think part of the problem that some of our folks are having is that. The the attitude of these clinics have a tendency to be a little bit of. Because they treat a majority of poorer people, not not that poor people deserve, you know what I mean? So they have that kind of attitude. And so that's something that I think that in negotiations or in discussions with them needs to be discussed. Because. And that's why they'll say, oh, go to Chesterton or go to Portage.
I did, but you know, when we were here in La Porte, I didn't, I didn't get that feeling at all when I went in, I mean, it it was. I just, I absolutely did not, I I understand exactly what you're saying and.
Their model is Medicaid and Medicare.
I I believe you're right, I believe you're right on that, but there's also the idea that it's contractual, so you're a contract person, you're just another number. So your number zero zero two or zero zero three, they they don't care one bit about those individuals, they they care about getting the numbers through the program and that's what they want to do. So you're right, I don't think it's just poor poorer people, I think that it's we're, this is a contract to offer cheap services that people come in. And take care, take advantage of, otherwise they go to their own doctors, as you can see, the majority of people are going to their own doctors.
I I'd like to add one more comment. I know this has always been an issue whenever switching insurances. And that has always been that I always wanted to go to my own doctor, the one that I had finally chosen, developed a relationship. And now I have a choice to go to my own doctor or to go to a clinic. And I'm going to tell you, if everybody here in the, you know, if I'm just like any other employee, yes, I would much prefer to go to my own doctor. But as as sitting here, I've gone and tried to use the other the other facility as well. So that's also what you're going to face in the marketing problem, is that most people still want to stay with their own doctors, so.
Some questions for Carl as it relates to the insurance, not not talking about the clinic, unless someone else has something to add about the clinic. You talked about other funding sources earlier besides the general fund and and some of the places where we get reimbursements or employee contributions. What were those other funding sources?
They included the different funds of community corrections, Cune Bridge, County Health Department. L I T, public safety, oh no, there's none there, sorry. Cune or Major Cune Bridge, M V H, Recorders Perpetual Fund, County nine one one. Adult probation, reassessment.
Basically, there was where we were paying employees on us.
I believe that's correct, yes.
I think one of the other big questions that was kind of part of your study into this was determining what had happened in previous years. And how much we needed to backfill into the group health insurance fund. Do you have that number to present to us as well?
Well, we did become aware of just over three million dollars of claims. That relate to the fourth quarter of two thousand twenty three were actually not posted into the county's financial system until first quarter of twenty four. So that may create a problem later this year. What I don't know is if this has been a reoccurring, I don't think it has, I think it was a one time thing. What the other thing I don't know either is were a lot of these claims because they were above our stop loss amounts. And so we also are receiving higher reimbursements. I think as we get later into this year, we'll maybe see what the reimbursements are if they exceed our one and a half million annual estimate. But I may be coming back to the council to say, hey, we're going to need to fund some additional money to balance the books out of Bank Six.
So notwithstanding the issue that about the posting in the wrong quarter. My impression was that we were underfunding the group health insurance fund chronically through years because we just hadn't adjusted it as costs went up. Is that the answer?
I I think that's true, and the other thing I was recommending that for your fund forty seven hundred, which is. For paying all the health claims, that we should also develop a budget, both revenues that are coming into the fund from these various funds, the reimbursements. The excess stop loss reimbursements, as well as expenditures, so that. Everyone knows that if you're going to need to fund additional amounts, it comes back before the council and has an additional appropriation. That was the other recommendation, I know some other counties do this as well. It's just a way to help everyone monitor what's happening with the health claims.
We need, I don't want, I don't want to step on Carl, but Justin, I think that there was a problem. In the past, because I remember a number of six point eight million dollars being told that that's what it was going to cost. And the claims were north of ten million dollars at some point in time. And that's not counting any refunds or reimbursements. So I think that that was sort of, Carl, wasn't that, wasn't there a six point eight million dollar number that was given to the council that they needed to fund? But the actual claims were closer to ten million dollars.
I I think that's true, I'm not sure what year that was. It it hasn't been consistently monitored and and I think we've always. When G I S makes recommendations, their recommendations have always been on the major health plan. With. Your major provider with, I'm sorry, U M R. And they didn't, they don't have your other numbers for what we have to pay for life insurance, dental, for the clinic. For the administrative, I mean, those are all extra costs. And those come out of our fund forty seven hundred out of Bank Six. And and you know, obviously, they don't get that information, they get the U M R information. And they're also trying to monitor better what Lake Shore Clinic is doing, so.
So if we were moving money into Bank Six before in order to make sure that Bank Six had the money to pay the bills that were coming. And we did those movements of money without a an additional appropriation, if we were increasing the fund. Isn't that going to pose a problem in the future if there wasn't an additional appropriation on the start of that process? It's essentially saying we have more money somewhere else than what we actually have.
Yeah, to me, the better way of doing it is to do an actual additional appropriation. So that we know what fund those amounts are funded from. I'm not entirely sure what funds those monies came from in the past. And we may be finding out here in the future.
Just example, the clinic, the there was no fund transfer what it was supposed to be, this was supposed to be money that was reimbursed through our savings. And it was explained to us when when we asked those questions when they first implemented it, so we didn't, the council never transferred money into that fund.
Yeah, the council wouldn't do that, that would be the treasurer's office that would would move.
Never came through us, it it was supposed to be, that was supposed to be the money that was a savings.
Can I bring up one more thing to the council that y'all just have to think about regarding this health insurance? Your budgetary amount last, what was the budgetary amount that was on the general fund budget last year, Justin? Fifty some odd million dollars?
Oh, roughly.
Yeah, you can't, you can't keep running into two thousand twenty five, two thousand twenty six, two thousand twenty seven. With just the health insurance being twenty percent of the budgetary amount. I mean, when you look at corporations all over the United States, it runs between seven and twelve percent. So you know, a twenty percent health insurance premium, sorry, Mark, I I don't want to say it, okay? That's enough, that's all I got to say.
To answer your question.
Oh, you're right on, I I totally agree with you, sir.
To answer your question, fifty four million, two eighty eight, three eighty four.
So if you have projected claims of twenty of twelve, three, twelve, twelve million, three hundred thousand, plus you're going to get your rebates. You're going to put you down at ten million dollars, you're looking at eighteen, twenty percent of your budgetary amount. And you just can't keep going like that in the over the next years, just something you all have to think about.
Going to have to make some hard decisions.
Correct.
The other, the other thing is after the, I think within two days of our last meeting, we transferred five hundred thousand dollars into there. There was a deposit of re, I got it wrong, refund, rebate, whatever it is. Of nine hundred and some thousand dollars came in there, so.
The nine, it's way too low, the nine hundred thousand is from payroll. And that comes every month.
There was, there was additional money that came back into Bank Six, so that came from U M R towards the the end. But. And hear me, and before you react, but it could almost, it could almost be a full time job of somebody. Just monitoring and tracking the insurance on the money that's coming in, where things are. And the clinics and everything else. And and right now, it's being split between the auditor's office, the treasurer's office and H R. And the commissioners, so and it's and it's and those before now, there wasn't really. Before this year, there wasn't the collaboration of the treasurer, the auditor, with Bank Six. The U M R accounts, the, you know, what's going on with the number of employees, the clinic and everything else. It's just this year because the crisis that we're in now has forced everybody to start talking and we need to have. A somebody that's sole job is to oversee the insurance to make sure it's happening.
One of the things you do, Randy, is if you don't have to go necessarily there, if we treated this insurance like we treat every other, every other account. If the money that there's these, the free money, these extra bonus monies, the whatever you want to call it, actually came back to the general fund. And they have to come every time and ask for it, we wouldn't, we do with all of our other other accounting methods out here. The problem is is that this money gets thrown around back and forth, we don't know what's going on. You don't need a person to do that, you just need a simple accounting method, that all that money would go either to a account or back to the general fund where we, they'd have to come up to us and ask us. a account or back to the general fund where we'd, they'd have to come up to us and ask us, the commissioner would have to come to ask us they wanted more money for.
And 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 that, that could be as simple, but but getting the treasurer's office with Bank Six doesn't, there's, there's separation of duties. Is that, is that a fair, Tim? Assumption that you, you don't see what they're doing, they don't necessarily see what you're doing all the time?
Well, what we definitely have fixed is, is we've made sure that, to answer your question somewhat roundabout, that postings, so that we know what's going on on more of a live basis or as live as possible, postings to the forty-seven hundred account are happening. Correct me if I'm wrong. Well, with ready U M R, which is the largest, the health insurance as quick as possible, so that if there needs to be an additional appropriation to come before you because of short, it's gonna be, it's gonna be low, we'll know as opposed to being blindsided and getting an emergency action from you.
But like I said, it's still a moving target and it's, and it's a scientific wild-ass guess. And when, at the end of the day, because you don't know what the claims are coming in and there's no scientific way to go, this is where you're gonna be. So.
And there's no way of knowing what North Shore has, has saved or not saved.
Well, and versus, right, and that's my thing, just i- if it's, if it's a cost, let's put a cost to it and determine, you know, figure out if if this is what the employees want and and I'm all, I'm all for it if it, it's a benefit and it's beneficial to the employees and and it's being utilized.
I would just point out a legal question, if I might, sir, which is, the question seems to me, one of the questions is whether the council has the authority to quote-unquote, not to create catfights, but to discontinue funding of that. But your attorney also represents the commissioners, so.
Yeah, but there, there is, there is a way. We have done it in the past. We, we, we have actually withdrawn up to like a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the commissioner's account. And this is not the first time. We're just not funding it. So if they're, now if they're contractually obligated, we can follow up with the contractual part of it. That's another obligation, but we just don't fund it. Simple as that.
Me personally, I'm gonna go on the side of, we'd have to look into that before we took action.
Those actions were because they didn't, it was only, it wasn't.
I understand.
So another thing we've asked for, forget this part of the insurance, one of the things we found, we brought it, we bought the insurance companies in here. They offer for free about getting the people back to work and that program, how we can implement the program, the proper way of doing it. The insurance company's offered to do it and they volunteered to come in and help us out with it. Where's that at?
That's on the work comp side, but I think they are working with that, aren't they, Monique?
Yes, yes, we do have a transitional program in place and that has been passed and that has been in place. We have a utilization of how many people that have been used on workers' comp and how many people that have, how many claims that we have. And so far, we're like on the downside of it. I think introducing that transitional duty program has really made the claim, we, we've seen a decrease in claims since we've had that.
How about the people that are off, are off coming back to work because we find, we can find a work for them?
We don't have anybody that has met that cri- that criteria. Most of them, they have like just a scrape or a fall and they come right back to work. So we haven't had, right now, we don't have anybody that is off work completely where they cannot come back and do something in their capacity that they were doing. Which is a good thing.
That is a good thing. Do, how is the, Monique, one of the things that we talked about is what is the marketing to the employees for the North Shore?
We send out, we send out emails. The emails go out to employees. It's, it's really the flyers. I don't, we don't have mailers. I mean, I don't send, I don't, I don't, I don't send out any mailers to employees at their homes. But if that's something that, you know, if you got the postage to do that, we can do that. But usually it's word of mouth and that's, that's one of the things that employees, they utilize that facility by word of mouth. They get treated well. If they're treated, you know, nicely when they go there, they come back and they tell their employees. And a lot of times, you know, our, the dependents use it, our employee dependents use it really, really heavily. So. I mean, it's, it's just a word of mouth. It's posted. I send out the emails. Like I think Mike touched on it earlier, people are complacent with their internal medicine doctors. They're like, hey, I have a specialty. If I go see, I like my doctor, I love my doctor, I'm gonna continue to go there. So I mean, we can't force it on the employees to do it, but I mean, it's there if they need it. Every employee that comes through our door for orientation, we, an open enrollment, they have, we have the representatives here to do benefit fairs and things like that, so.
I mean, if, if we absolutely showed a savings, there could be some incentive for employees to go there, but that's something we'd have to look at. I just want to go back to one thing. When Tim asked about legally, can we defund or do something? I just want to go on record that we are absolutely not talking about defunding any insurance or doing anything. So I just want that disclaimer out there that that's not out there. So I don't want, I don't want to read about it on the news, hear about it on anywhere else. That is not being discussed or even talked about. Period.
Follow-up question from Monique. I got a copy of the twenty twenty-five health insurance premium rates, particularly the employee and employer share. And what I noticed on it was that the amount for the HSA plan is actually less for twenty twenty-five than what it is now.
Yeah, that, that, that is, that is just a proposed way we use, that our, our custom has always been to make it the same as our thousand-dollar plan. So that's just the custom that we, that we, we usually change that once this approved, that the numbers match whatever the thousand-dollar plan is. That's just a proposed, that's, those are just proposed rates.
Okay. And and was there an increase to the, to the cost for the employee?
Yes, they all increased for the employees. All those are increased costs from this year.
Do you, do you know what percentage it went up?
I don't know, I don't know right offhand.
Okay, because I guess I'm wondering how we calculate those rates when, when we are just now finding out like that we need to increase our budget for it. So if our cost has increased to cover all of the health insurance expenses, then the employee's share should also be increasing because it's eighty-five fifteen.
It would.
It would, yeah, they are, they are increased.
We haven't approved the rate yet.
Okay, so this is sort of.
You're not approving it today, right?
No, no.
Okay.
Would be at our regular meeting.
Okay.
Randy. Randy, if I may ask, in looking at the deposits, I do see one on eight twenty-six for nine hundred thousand. But that was the employer share. That's what payroll puts in.
I'll find out what I'm talking about and not get a hold of it.
I know Monique sent us an email that she had received some recently and without looking, I'm gonna guess it was five hundred and some thousand.
So I, 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 I think I'm gonna misheard Rhonda. Are you saying that payroll pays nine hundred thousand dollars a month?
Not payroll, but.
Their contribution?
The employer.
It can't be. Nine hundred thousand dollars a month if it's employee contribution, that's ten million dollars a year.
She said employer, employer.
Five percent is done every month.
Contribution.
But I think it also includes the transfers, doesn't it, Rhonda, from the various monthly transfers are also being done through payroll?
I don't know what transfers you mean, but the nine hundred dollars would be, the nine hundred thousand, I mean, would be all the funds. Is that what you mean?
Yes, all the funds, including the employees portion that's being withheld from payroll.
Is not in that nine hundred thousand. No, that's employer only.
Well, that's employer, okay, so that's the different funds coming in. And then there's an additional fifteen percent that's coming off of the employee's paycheck.
Yes. Yes. And then what's? Yeah. That is correct.
All right. Is there any other questions regarding the insurance? I think it's clear as mud.
I, I, I would just say that I, just to be clear on what I was saying earlier, as Mr. Di Martino pointed out, the, the cost of the insurance, eating twenty percent of generals, he said. There's different, you have to look at the whole menu of options, of course, to, to make the best decision, but you know, we don't know about North Shore, but you know, the question is, do we cut out a benefit that employees generally maybe don't use enough to cost the county money? To the, you potentially do that, that means less of a potential premium increase on the employer, employer, employee percentage from fifteen to something different. So it's, look, keep your menu, keep your menu options open would be the auditor's recommendation.
Right, thank you.
One, one last question for Carl, and I ask you, could you repeat the, the number of the total increase that you think we need to make to forty-seven hundred?
Eight? Eight hundred sixty-three thousand, six fifty-six. I'll send the schedule over to Randy and he can distribute it to each of you.
A follow-up to that, was that a hundred percent coming out of the general fund or were you expecting that there would be proportionate shares coming from all the other various funds that contribute to it?
Pretty much proportionate. It's about a ten percent increase from every fund. And again, it doesn't have to be that way. You can decide which funds you want the eight hundred sixty-three thousand to come from.
Okay, I ask because each of those funds, in some cases, they don't have any extra money, so it wouldn't be feasible to pay additionally.
So you may have to cover that out of the general fund would be my thought.
Particularly, we would need to figure that out before the budget was advertised probably for some of the levy.
Correct, unless, I know right now you do not have any coming out of the L I T public safety, but I, again, I'm not sure if that's fully committed. You know, there is some increased revenues that come in each year. Could that come from that? I don't know what all you have made commitments to at this point.
The L I T public safety, group health insurance comes out of the commissioners' budget.
Okay. But I, one possibility I'm maybe suggesting, Justin, would be, you know, for the increase in the amount of public safety tax, unless you're adding new positions, could be, come out, you know, make a line item to cover some of that if you didn't have enough out of, say, general fund. Again, it's your discretion where I'm just recommending we need about eight hundred sixty-three thousand increase in all of the funds that this comes out on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments regarding that? Earl, you got some?
Uh, just a comment that we. Sorry, comment that, remember our, our money is virtually general fund money because it's no restrictions on what we have left in our. I asked to have on the agenda at our next meeting, the four hundred eighty thousand to fund the fire departments. And that would take us down to about three point three million. Personally, I'm not gonna be here next year, but personally, I can't see anything more valuable than funding our insurance for our employees. We have to take a million out of there, we have to take a million.
Right.
The one thing I will say is this, we know we have to allocate this money and spend it in twenty-six. We don't have to do that with our general fund money, but our general fund's pretty low anyways, so.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you, Carl.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
And then, so is there anything with the, our regular budget? Did everything get turned in? Do we have anything back from the, has that been done or?
Turned in.
The state that we needed to?
Nothing gets turned into the state until you finalize the budget.
Just the figure so that we know exactly where we're at budgetarily.
Are you trying? Oh, you're talking about the current, the net, the current, net assessed value?
Yeah. Has that been, has that all been completed so the state can?
They're looking over a number of different counties still and we're in the queue.
Okay.
So there's been back and forth between the offices. We don't, we don't have a final from them yet.
A projection or?
Well, we're waiting to hear from them. I mean, they might, you know, if they object to something or say that something's not right, but we think that, we think we're gonna be good. We just don't, no.
How, how is, is this, how is this gonna affect us approving our final budget when we can only, after we approve it, we can only decrease it, we can't increase it?
I think we'll have it, I think we'll have it.
You think we'll have it?
Have it by the end of the week, I'm guessing.
So, so at our regular meeting?
I'm hoping, and I believe so. We're, we're contacting them daily.
Right, Rhonda?
I know we're gonna have the number before our regular meeting, but, before our September thirtieth. But I think that we're still two point five million or more off of what they will approve. So at some point, the general fund will have to be looked at to see what changes can be made because I think it's at least two point five million over what, according to what they approved last year.
Uh, we are.
We have to do that before October twelfth.
Five above where we were last year.
Right, but we do have a four percent increase.
Not to general fund though.
It's a four percent increase to the levy.
It's, it's.
Part of the general fund budget.
Yeah, it's only a. I'm sorry?
Four percent of levy, how much would that be?
What's that increase?
Four percent is four percent, but it gets divided up between.
What dollar amount is that?
One point seven million, one point seven million roughly.
But it gets divided between like seven to twelve funds.
Some goes into general.
Right.
You're saying one point five?
We're one point five above where we were in twenty twenty-four.
So where'd you get two point five?
We've been running totals, I don't know.
I can run the total when I get back, but I'm.
He ran.
You've been doing this since we had.
I'm not, I'm not saying he's.
I'm not infallible, but I'm, I'm pretty close.
I'm backing you up on that, but I.
Just say the one point five is accurate and plus we have a percentage of that from the levy. So we're not looking like that much, not that we're talking about.
We're not making up two point five million dollars.
This, this is our second meeting, right, for our budget. Today was a meeting, meeting for a second meeting for a budget.
We're not doing a reading tonight, are we?
You had to meet twice.
Are we doing a reading on our budget tonight?
Coming tonight for?
I don't, I don't think so.
What was the reason for tonight?
To talk the insurance, getting the insurance information so we can.
Why are we doing?
Have our second.
The budget part of it. Weren't we supposed to meet before our regular meeting? That was the, that was the initial part everybody brought up about it.
Right.
Was this the second reading?
We're not doing the second reading tonight because we don't have everything together to do it.
This was supposed to be our second reading.
Correct.
That's why I keep asking.
But we don't, we don't have the information to do it. We don't have the information to do it.
The budget hasn't been advertised yet because it hasn't been set.
So yes and no.
Okay. So the next reading will probably not have the numbers either, the third reading, as we're talking right now.
They, they're the final reading. He's, he's indicating the auditor's office, I should say, not he or she, is indicating that they think they might have something back at the end of the week.
We think so.
We have three weeks from tonight to our official working.
Right.
We don't mean to the thirtieth.
Yes, and either we advertise ten days before the thirtieth that we are going to have our official budget presented on the thirtieth, which I'm assuming that's not gonna be the case because we don't have our official budget now that you've approved to go forward. But October twelfth is the very last day that you can do it.
That's, that's my question. So, so thank you.
There's probably a good chance we're gonna.
We need to have it, no, it's, we're probably just gonna have to advertise past that, Randy. I think we're gonna have to advertise past our thirtieth, past the thirtieth, this meeting.
That's what I, that's what I was gonna agree with you, that we're gonna have to have a meeting between the thirtieth and the twelfth to formally adopt the budget.
Adoption comes after the hearing.
Yeah, to have the hearing. The hearing is by October twelfth.
Trying to get the idea of scheduling for this because we weren't ready for this one, Justin, I, I understand.
Are we gonna, are we gonna be able to have a hearing on the thirtieth, you think?
You have to approve a budget before we have the hearing. So I would say not unless you meet again.
What, what Mr. Graves means by approve the budget is that we have to approve what we want advertised.
Yeah.
If we don't tell the auditor's office what we want them to advertise, they can't go off and go do it, or we wouldn't like it if they did that.
Right.
So we need to know what numbers we want to give them so that they can go advertise it.
We understand.
Partly it's expenditures. What do we want to advertise as our, our anticipated twenty twenty-five general fund and other levy-controlled fund expenditures?
In the past, we've had those numbers before we started making dates for this, like example this meeting, I don't disagree with you. We have our budget way ahead of time, way before, if, it's actually, we're, we're meeting a month more, I mean, one month prior to where we're ten years ago. And we still made our dates. We gotta, I gotta know that the other meeting that we have those numbers.
So let me ask you, how many, you gotta have it ten days before the thirtieth? We'd have, we would have to know the numbers that we want to have advertised.
Yes. Like the one hundred accounts still need to be approved, for example. We haven't done that yet.
That's true, and we could do that now.
The one hundred account?
Yes, we could, we could do one hundred accounts any, we could have done it the day.
I, I, absolutely.
We could do this now, so if that's the case, I can make a motion to approve the one hundred accounts as read.
Do you? Adam, in your numbers, do you have the increases for the position? Do, Adam, in your numbers, do you have the increases for the positions?
The steps?
Because those aren't even all approved yet. You're doing that next month.
Did you do the one hundred accounts?
Well, I think what she's talking about is the increases that we talked to from the job valuation. That's not there.
Yeah, so there's still more to increase in the one hundreds.
Are there raises that are being proposed in this? Because this would be the time to incorporate those in.
I don't believe that's part of Mr. Yagowski's, he's.
I think it is.
You're still planning to approve some of those numbers on the thirtieth, so we definitely don't have the final number for one hundred accounts.
So let me, let me throw this out there. We gotta have ten days, so we're either gonna have, we're either gonna have a meeting prior, another meeting prior to the thirtieth so that we can collectively talk about the numbers that we're gonna do and a raise, if we're gonna do a raise. And then at the, advertise it, and then at the thirtieth, we can have our hearing, and then after that, we're gonna have to have the adoption. Because we, let me ask you this, can we do the, and I don't know if this is a question for Guy, can we do the public hearing? Is there, need to be a gap in between those two? Is there a set days between there and adoption?
Yes, ten, couple hundred days.
So, all right, so you can't do back to back, so. I agree, but I think, I think we're gonna need to look at meeting, we have to meet.
Randy, you should go backwards, right?
What I'm looking at.
Ron, what's the date, October twelfth? Is that the date?
The thirtieth, the thirtieth is the date.
I think you want me to work backwards.
From the thirtieth.
What's the date?
So we'd have to meet somewhere in the sixteenth to the twentieth. Next week.
What's the date that the budget has to be adopted?
The thirtieth is the public hearing.
No, no, no.
But listen, we don't know the numbers to advertise, Guy.
Oh, no, 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 what, but what is the date that the budget has to be adopted?
Twelve.
It's not the twelfth.
It's either November first or, or October thirtieth.
That's the adoption date. Randy was working with the hearing date.
On the thirtieth?
Hearing date.
Didn't I hear a date at the last meeting, October twelfth?
October twelfth is the last day that it can be held, yes.
The last day to be advertised.
Okay, the la, okay, the last day that the budget can be advertised.
Hearing can be.
The October twelfth, Justin, is the last day the hearing can be held. Isn't it? The hearing.
Because there's, there's ten days between the, the hearing and the adoption, and there's ten days between the advertising and the hearing. So it's a twenty-day process, assuming the most efficient path possible, which you probably don't wanna do. So that's why they say, uh, that the twelfth is the last day to advertise. If you miss that deadline, then every other deadline is, is impossible. You've missed the first one, you missed the other one.
So Randy, you wanna look at your dates, you wanna start at the twelfth and work backwards. That's the way you wanna set up your.
What we were doing, back to the thirtieth. So October twelfth is a Saturday. I'm assuming, nobody wants to come in on a Saturday.
Or Friday. But then you have to look at the newspaper, you know, when you can see.
It's not published in newspapers, this one's just on, on Gateway, they eliminated the.
Okay. Yes, I mean, Friday, the eleventh, so we gotta work backwards from the eleventh, Randy.
Right. If I may, I just looked at the DLGF budget calendar, the last day to hold the public hearing, I think, is, depending on when you adopt it, you still have to give ten days from the adoption to the, um, from the public hearing to the adoption. I think the calendar says October twenty-second. Let me just look real quick.
I'm looking at it now, and it says the, um, last possible day for tax units to hold a public hearing under twenty twenty-five budgets is October twenty-second. And then it says the last day, the deadline for all tax units to adopt twenty twenty-five budgets, tax rates and tax levies is November first. Let me get some code citations.
Thank you.
I just actually hit the guide, too.
And so then the last day would be October twelfth to advertise. So, you can do it sooner. So would be, be safe then, not to have a meeting between now and the thirtieth and use the thirtieth, somewhere around the twelfth, and then at the end of the month?
That's what I thought you.
Right?
That's what I was trying to go with.
Looking at Carl and Justin, the date, guys, I gotta have the dates in front of them.
Look at the calendar now.
And that's what I was trying to mention, that's what I was going with your subtraction, so if you, our la, our meeting in October should be October thirty-first, Thursday. We can get everything done at that date, instead of meeting on the twenty-eighth.
That would be the final.
That'd be a final, so you could do everything at one time.
Yep.
Change your meeting date from October twenty-eighth to October thirty-first.
So could, would it, would it be, with the dates of September thirtieth for our regular meeting, utilize that, and then October fourteenth, because it's a Monday night versus a Friday at the end of the week. So October fourteenth, and then, um, yes, the twenty-eighth, I guess, maybe, at the end of the. Wait, wait. Yeah, never mind, October, yep, twenty-eight.
So what date are you gonna publish, Randy, based on your dates there?
October fourth would be the last day possible.
October fourth, right?
Probably the third to be safe.
What he said.
So on our, our thirtieth meeting, we'll have the number, we'll.
Thirty or thirty-first?
Decide what we're gonna advertise.
Oh, September, okay.
That'll all get advertised by the third for a meeting on the fourteenth. And then we'll adopt on the twenty-eighth.
Hearing ten fourteen, and adoption ten twenty-eight.
Actually, you wouldn't have till the fourth to advertise.
Either way.
And the, the twenty-eighth is a regular council meeting, by the way, so.
I was just trying to get it through.
No, I had, the twelfth is a Saturday. Um, I don't have it in front of me. Twenty-second is correct for the hearing.
So is that, that gives us enough, is that Carl and Justin, you're looking at, is that Guy?
I think it checks out.
Yeah, I think that those dates were, Justin?
Yeah, I think so.
And that way, we're only adding one additional meeting in there, since the twenty-eighth is a regular meeting. And, and on the, so that we have it set on the fourteenth, you wanna do five o'clock again?
Yes.
That, good work for everybody.
First for me.
All right, so you can, Rhonda, you can go ahead and put that in stone.
Yes, thank you, I'll let solid ways know all.
And, and then the twenty-eighth, we do not, or, or are we? And I guess we'll know on the fourteenth. You're gonna need anything done prior, like a workshop or some kind of little budget meeting before the regular meeting? I'm just.
So we propose one based off of waiting for the numbers coming back from DLGF?
It probably wouldn't hurt, we can always.
What is the ten days, Justin, is that after the hearing, or when does the DLGF send us the?
There's, there's two ten-day requirements. There's ten days between when we post it on Gateway and when we can hold the hearing. And then there's another ten days between the hearing and the, uh, the adoption. Those are minimum ten days.
Right, but I think, if I'm not mistaken, what I thought I heard Randy say is, uh, with the DLGF numbers, is it after the adoption that they give us the seventeen eighty-two notice?
Yeah, as well, it'd be like in December.
And then we have ten days after that to change.
Correct, yeah, there's another ten-day deadline. After they provide you the official seventeen eighty-two notices, you have ten days to make a response, or you automatically default to accepting what they are giving you. And then they'll issue a budget order after that.
We can make our corrections at that time, right. The other thing is, you don't have to wait for the DLGF final assessed value. You could take what they, the current years and take, say, ninety percent and use those for the advertisement. The DLGF will then, in the final budget order, the seventeen eighty-two notice, they'll put the final numbers in, which would result in a lower tax rate.
And most people estimate the tax rate's high anyways, or?
That's correct, you, you wanna estimate them high, and that's why you always take a reduced assessed value, so just because unless there are significant reductions in the assessed value, doesn't mean you have to wait. Typically, your assessed value does go up unless you're aware of any significant reductions.
Now, Carl, the, the CNAV numbers are used to calculate the, uh, um, the circuit breaker impacts. And those could shift somewhat, but they probably have some sort of model that they're using to get it pretty close.
And the, and the DLGF has estimates of what the, they estimate the county's circuit breaker to be for two thousand twenty-five. It's on their website. I can forward that worksheet to you.
I have the estimates.
Estimates that you can use, and then the DLGF will plug in the actual numbers, or actually, there'll be final numbers that will be given later, but typically, they'll, they estimate those high, so you should be safe in using those.
We do have those.
Thank you. Anything else? So our next meeting will be on September thirtieth? With no workshop prior to, is that? No, 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 we got, we got a short one on enterprise, we kicked that.
I got five o'clock on my schedule.
Yeah.
Do you want it to be later than five, or is, if it's just enterprise? You tell me, I'm good either way.
I'd leave it at five right now, but I think we're gonna shorten it to probably five thirty. Um, and I say that because if there's something else that pops up between now and then, I don't want, it's easier to take it away than to add to it.
And so that everyone's aware and not surprised when we do this, but I am going to get the packets mailed out before you go to the AIC conference. So that's why the deadlines are shorter for everyone right now.
Thank you. Thank you.
So that we go into that meeting prepared, what sort of steps do we need to take so that everything's lined up for us to get the final approval for the advertisement at the September thirtieth meeting?
Assuming you're talking to the auditor's office?
Somebody. What does the auditor's office need from us in order to have before us at the next meeting, a slate that's, or a proposed budget that's ready to be, for us to give the okay to advertise?
I know that there's still some things that departments have sent in, um, to request. So I'm assuming those would have to come before you on the thirtieth. But other than that, having those approved, and then the other comment, things that were changing, once I know those, and then put the CNAV in, or the assessed value.
Any of those classifications that were changed would need to be added to it, and then any type of raise that we're thinking about doing, we'll talk about that on the thirtieth. Get that finalized, and then, um, the numbers. Anything else?
But I think we're good otherwise. And I will contact you once I have numbers.
Mr. Yagowski.
So just in simplistic terms. Simplistic terms, you could actually get rid of the one hundred accounts tonight, just by saying that you can always change one hundred before we submit the numbers, so I could simply say, like I was saying earlier, we can accept the one hundred accounts with the changes that were made at our last meeting. And if somebody decides to raise, they just reopen up, they just reopen it up, so that's why I want to.
Is that a motion?
That's my motion.
You're, so you're, I just.
As read by our last meeting with the changes.
Okay. It, that's, it's a kind of a very broad, but is, if, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Yagowski, he's approving the one hundred accounts with the job reclassifications that were done at the last meeting. So all the ones that were presented and all the ones that were.
Approved.
Approved at the last meeting.
Not all presented.
Right.
Right, all approved.
Approved, is there a second on that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cunningham. Is there any questions?
Just one quick comment, is, as Mr. Yagowski said, with the opportunity, if we, to apply a raise, we can reopen it for discussion, absolutely.
It just, I, I think it just allows them to then calculate every, they can calculate up to the point of, of giving, adding a raise to it.
Absolutely, yes.
I, I get that, the idea, and like, I'm okay with setting it, like, keep everything the same as the, as the minimum, plus whatever was being done by the job evaluation committee. But if, if you're gonna wanna give raises, now would be the time to tell the auditor's office so that they can calculate the numbers before the next meeting.
They know the numbers, they know the numbers. I'm, I'm.
He may.
So either that.
Exactly what a one percent pay raise is gonna cost, is right?
Well, it's in the ballpark of five hundred thousand.
Right.
But there's a lot of other ripple effects implications of that. If you say one percent for everybody, there's dozens of different funds that people are being paid out of, and some of them may not have an additional one percent in, in cash that should do that. So now you need to move, come up with other places to fund them in order to make it all come together.
You remember, yes.
A lot of extra work.
Absolutely, remember, because if you remember in the past, I've always given the motion that it was included, all the other things that are applied. You're right, Justin, that there's people that are on, that are getting grants, all that type of stuff, there's not money in those accounts for those type of things, correct?
We might, we might get a sense from the council of what it's, what it's, what its inclinations are. I don't know if you wanna have that discussion, because that, if you don't, then that's up to you.
I think that, that would be, at a, a meeting night, that would be, it's a short enough talk to tell us what's going on at that point, and give us the final figures that we have.
Or we can receive feedback private, privately from each of you. I think we can do that legally without, because we're not, we're not in the council, we don't violate open door.
I would like, I would, you're not like what?
You said council.
You said council.
I said, we're not on the, we're not on the council.
Oh, oh, I thought you said you're not like the council, vital, you know.
No, no, we're not on the council, we can't violate open door, we can receive, we can receive information.
If we, if we still use, if we still use this motion and the thirtieth, uh, because you're gonna have all the numbers to be able to plug in, Justin, I believe that, that time we can make an intelligent decision on the thirtieth.
As long as we know revenues and we found a way to, to get the overall cost of the general fund down, yeah, probably.
That's why I wanted to get this out of the way, so to get this, this, the one hundred accounts out of the way, so that's, that's the purpose of it.
I'd like to see us give at least a minimum of two percent, but, I mean, then, it all depends on what.
I haven't, I get the numbers, I can't make a decision.
I, I get it.
So.
No, no, but that could give the auditor's office an opportunity to work out what the numbers are, where there might be shortfalls if they plan up two percent.
Well, the, the, the usually do is they give us one, two, three percent, they've done this in the past.
Uh, yeah, but as mentioned just now, that there could be restrictions in some of the funds, because we're so heavily, uh, deep in some of those funds.
That's why we asked to.
Okay.
So let, let, let's back up, is, is everybody good with the, excuse me, or have any other questions regarding the motion? Excuse me, that does not include the pay, the two percent that I just threw out there, that, that's not added to the motion, that's merely me talking. Is everybody good with the motion as it is to prove the one hundred accounts, plus the, um, reclassifications that were done, approved at the last council meeting?
I think you're asking, is there any more discussion?
Sure, any more, that's, that's, although, although, do we need to do a roll count?
Roll call, roll call, roll call. Roll call, roll.
Councilman Keel.
Aye.
Councilman Mullinhour.
Aye.
Councilman Krunko.
Aye.
Councilman Novak.
Aye.
Councilman Rosenbaum.
Nay.
Councilman Yagowski.
Aye.
And Councilman Cunningham.
Aye.
Six ayes, one nay.
So a question would be, auditor's office, can we do a one, two, three percent, as we have those numbers?
Send those, and maybe email those out to everybody, edit those, please.
Yes.
Thank you, auditor's.
And, and also, if there's any finagling that needs to be done, or we're. If, if we have any funds that, like, public safety lit may be short, that would be critical to know, exactly.
That's a yes.
I agree, but it's just, we, but maybe there's another one we don't know of.
All right, is there anything else we need to discuss tonight? Guy, you have anything?
Nope, I talked too much tonight.
I agree.
Wonderful job.
Just kidding. Can we wear costumes on the twenty-eighth? That's my question for you, sir.
Mr. Yagowski made a motion to recess.
Second.
Second by Mr. Rosenbaum, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we're in recess until September thirtieth.